Getting here, everybody. Uh, welcome to the special meeting of the Bellflower City Council. Today is Monday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. It is four oh eight by my watch, and I am calling this meeting in order. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comments, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comments. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Potem Koops?
Here.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Here.
Mayor Garza?
Here. Thank you so much for that. Uh, item number three, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
Pursuant to Government Code, Section five, four-nine, five, four-point-three A, the public may address the city council on matters listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak at an agenda item may utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on this agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you so much for that, Mrs. Stewart. And this is for the audience. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature under the participants tab, or if by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. Your microphone will be then unmuted so that you can provide your comments. All right, uh, item number four, A, Mrs. Stewart.
Last March, Mr. Bernard was here to, uh, from FM three to talk to us about the findings in his, uh, survey on the potential tax on the November twenty-twenty ballot, and he had given us the information that, uh, um, seemed to be pretty positive, but indicated at that time that we have to be careful of, uh, what the COVID virus might bring us, and he was absolutely right. Uh, um, all hell broke loose over the next three weeks, and we've been shut down for the better part of three and a half months now. Tonight, Mr. Bernard is back with us, uh, not necessarily live, but, uh, semi-live, and he's gonna tell us what the impacts of the COVID virus and other social issues have been on our efforts to maybe put this item on the November ballot. And, Mr. Bernard, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Um, I wanna make sure everyone can hear me.
We can hear you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, well, I wanna thank, uh, good afternoon. I wanna thank, uh, the mayor, the council members, and the city staff for inviting me back to present, uh, very recent results of your public opinion survey. Um, I'll go through this, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. You have me as long as you need me. So, uh, we conducted a dual-mode survey as we did, uh, very recently in January and February of this year, uh, which means we conducted it both online and by telephone, and by telephone, I mean cell lines and landlines between June third and June ninth, so this month. Surveys were completed among a random sample of four hundred and fifteen voters who are registered in the city and who are likely to vote in a November twenty-twenty general election based on their past voter history, or if they've recently registered to vote. Overall, the margin of error for questions asked of everyone, such as when we ask them how they will vote, is plus or minus four-point-nine percent. So think of it about five for simple math. And then, in certain situations, we asked a random half the sample some questions and another random half some other questions, partly because we had a lot of questions to ask, and partly because we wanted to test nuances in how we ask certain things. There, the margin of error is close to plus or minus seven percent. The survey was available in both English and Spanish, and seven percent of the respondents opted to respond, uh, this, to the survey in Spanish. In some cases, you'll notice something doesn't quite add up to a hundred percent. I'll blame that entirely in rounding error. And where we've asked questions in the past for the city, um, and it's the same question, I will show you tracking results over time. So let's start with the mood of the electorate. Well, we began the survey, as we have many of your surveys, asking whether they thought things in the city were generally headed in the right direction, or did they think things off, were off on the wrong track. Uh, the blue is right direction, the red is wrong track. The dark, uh, gray, which we haven't always asked, but the last couple of surveys we have, giving them an option of mixed, is dark gray, and then the light gray is they don't know. And you'll see as you go down each row, it's the tracking results from relative to the previous surveys. The top item is the most recent survey. And there, statistically, even with January and February, the right direction has not changed in spite of the fact that we're now in a pandemic and that we're now in a recession. Uh, this is not surprising to me. It would have been had you been the first survey I've done since the, um, pandemic, but I'm seeing pretty consistently across the board that opinions are as good, if not better, about the direction of the city. People are much more likely to stay home or around their city. They're connected to their community more, and therefore, they fear, they're feeling a little bit better about their community, or as equally as good. We asked, and this is a new question for obvious reasons, we asked our random half the sample if they thought looking ahead to six months, which is approximately, it's not exactly, but approximately when the election will be, do you think the coronavirus pandemic will generally be under control or not? And then we asked the other random half twelve months. And you could see that a plurality, just slightly, a plurality think it's forty-four percent that it will not be under control in six months, and your residents are, your voters are a little bit more optimistic that by, within a year, at least half say things will be under control. But then, that suggests that at least a half don't think it will be under control, or they just don't know. And we also asked the random half about, uh, whether they thought the economy in their area will recover or not. In the, half the sample asked six months, half the sample twelve months, and you could see a plurality in both cases do not believe that the economy will have recovered. Now, putting all of this in context, we're gonna move into talking a little bit about, uh, the need for money for the city and then the ballot question. So we've stacked it up front. We're not hiding from this, 'cause you need to know what the real reality is. So we've reminded them about the COVID virus, we've reminded them about the economy, and now we ask them, as we have in previous surveys, as you can see the tracking from previous years, in your personal opinion, do you think there's a great, which is a dark blue, some need, which is the light blue, little need, which is the pink, no real need, which is the red, or, uh, or they volunteered, they don't know. The question is, do, does the city need additional funds to provide the level of city services that Bellflower residents need and want? And I've aggregated the great and some need on the right-hand side, and the little and no real need on the right-hand side as well, and it is ranked by, uh, the year or the, and the date of the survey. And you could see the perception of the need for additional funds is slightly up from just February and January of, uh, this year, when it was sixty-seven percent greater some need, it's now seventy-three. And in many ways, it's very similar to your numbers earlier on in two fif- in twenty-fifteen, in twenty-twelve, in twenty-eleven. Um, uh, some of that time, you've actually been successful at passing measures. So there's clearly a sense of a need. So now we ask that ballot summary question. Now, as you know and I know, ultimately, it will be the council who will choose whether to place this on the ballot and what it will include, working with your legal counsel. But I needed to test the placeholder, so I worked with your city staff and identified current priorities, as well as married them with the priorities that voters expressed to the survey in January and February of this year, and came up with this question that was vetted by your legal counsel to, uh, sanction it being a legal question. I don't wanna ask something that your legal counsel will say, "Well, I would never ask." Um, I will point out that the four-point-five million dollars is less than what we asked in January, purely because your financial, um, your financial folks are telling me, as all cities are, that they anticipate that the revenues will decline, at least in the several years to come. So with that ballot question in hand, we asked them, uh, if they were earned election today, based on this description, would you vote yes in favor or no to oppose? If they said they would vote, uh, yes, we asked them, is that definitely or probably yes? Those are the darker blues on, above. We wanna know the intensity of support. And if they said no, we wanted to get intense opposition, so we said, is that definitely or probably no? And if they were undecided at first, we pushed them a little and said, "Well, would you lean yes, or would you lean no?" If they said they'd lean yes, we put them in the yes camp. If they said they'd lean no, they put them, we put them in the no camp. If they still said they were undecided, they are the pure undecided on this vote at five percent. So your initial vote with just hearing the ballot summary is sixty-three percent yes, thirty-two percent no, five undecided. But I wanna look a little deeper. Fifty-five percent were willing to commit to yes when I just asked them that. Remember, it's a fifty-plus-one measure. If you move forward, it's a general purpose measure. By law, it requires fifty-plus-one. I'll also remind you that the margin of error is plus or minus five percent. So that definitely, probably, less yes combination is either sixty or fifty. The definitely yes is at about the lowest I would want it to be, at a little bit more than three and ten. But the good news is your definitely no is at two and ten, which is about the floor I see, I often will see. And I see this a lot of times, and yet the measure is very much in play. And so I look at this measure and these results and suggest, at least initially today, that you have approximately about seventy-five percent of the voters in play for a fifty-plus-one measure of three-quarter cents. And I wanted to show you a couple of demographics that I thought would be of interest to you. I took everyone who said definitely, probably, or lean yes, and I made them blue. So that blue bar you see is the total yes on the initial vote for that ballot question you just saw. I took everyone who said definitely, probably, or lean yes, uh, lean no, excuse me, and I made them red. That's the red bar that you see on this slide. And then the gray bar are those folks who are pure undecided. This particular slide looks at city council districts. And the percentages at the bottom, below the district one, two, three, four, five, four and five, are the percentages that they will make up of a likely November twenty-twenty electorate. I know that the districts are split evenly into five based on population, but I'm sure you can appreciate that not every district has the same registration rates as the others, and not every district has the same likelihood to vote as the others. That being said, you could see across the board that the numbers are fifty-two percent or higher on the yes side. I will remind you, because it's a smaller percentage of the respondents, that the margin of error is larger. Nonetheless, I will come back to this shortly for us to look at the various districts a little bit in more depth. And then the other demographic I wanted to show you, remember, remember earlier in the presentation, I showed you a slide in which I said, "Do you think they even need additional funds?" And the folks on the left are the seventy-three percent that said great or some need. The middle bars are the little, no, or the people that said little need or no real need, and the farthest right are the folks who said they don't know. Only seven percent said they didn't know. And you could see, the more they perceive there is a need, the more they are likely to vote yes on this measure, suggesting that outreach effort, communication, is very vital to the success of this measure. And I'll come back to that point a number of times in this presentation. So let's move on to voter priorities. Now, as you know, you cannot advocate, but you can educate. So we gave them a list of services and infrastructure improvements and aspirational outcomes if you had that service or that infrastructure improvement, and said, regardless of whether you support this or not, how important is it to be included in the measure? And we gave them the option of extremely important, which is the darkest blue, very important, which is the mid-color blue, and you'll notice I've aggregated the extremely and very important on the right-hand side. And I also gave them the option of somewhat important, which is the lightest blue, and not-too-important, which is the red, and I've combined the don't knows with the not-too-important, because if they didn't know, it really can't be that important to them. I've ranked it by the extremely and very important. So a few things I wanna tell you before we identify some of the top priorities of your voters. One is, regardless of whether you move forward with a ballot initiative, this is very good data when you dis- when you're ready to talk about budget, to at least see what your voter priorities are in terms of, um, uh, services and infrastructure improvements that they value in how I, how you think about, uh, your priorities, uh, for the city. Second, I wanna point out that you have a, a high number of items that score very highly. You've got, on this slide, all of them are in the eighties. In the next slide, they're in the seventies. Remember, I'm looking for a fifty-plus-one measure with the margin of errors. Anything in the mid, higher fifties or above scores would score well. And it tells me that the city, uh, uh, i.e. the council and the staff are very much in tune with the priorities of your voters, or these numbers would not be as high. And there are cities I come back to and say, "I don't really have that many high ones for you. I'll give you what I have." In this case, it's a good reflection of their opinion. That being said, the lead items are keeping public areas clean and safe. You may recall in just January and February, the framing was keep public areas safe and clean, and it typically referred to people when they're walking down the street, uh, look, um, reacting homeless folks in your city. Um, obviously, there's a group that really care about the homeless and how they're treated. There's also a group that both care about the homeless but are concerned that when they walk down the street, that there's not defecation, that there's not litter, um, and that they're not panhandled. In this case, it's a broader description, because when people think of public areas now clean and safe, they're also thinking that they've been cleaned from the COVID virus. So if they go into a park or a public area that if they touch a handle or something, that they would feel safe, that they are not going to be getting the virus, because the city's on top of cleaning things, making things hygienic. Protecting local drinking water sources has been an ongoing value in your city. That has not changed. Retaining local businesses at this point in time, when local businesses are struggling, support by the city, either encouraging people to shop vo- uh, locally, or whatever you may be doing, are important elements that voters support. And of course, preparing for and recovering from public health emergencies scores well. Maintaining nine-one-one emergencies has always scored well, and you'll notice that the intensity spikes there at fifty-three percent extremely important. And there you go, the addressing the homelessness and homelessness in general, and maintaining Bellflower's long-term financial stability. Like your city and other cities who have been hurt, uh, significantly from the impacts of the pandemic, uh, voters understand that and want you to be whole, uh, and solid. And then, a variety of other items that is now, the surveys, the results are in the public domain. Um, the repairing streets and potholes in this instance is a little lower than it was previously. I would argue, as more and more people start to drive to work and activities and social activities, hopefully personally-distanced, um, they will be remembered by the potholes they drive, uh, across, um, and the streets that still need to be maintained. And I will show you in a moment where that point is also made. And as we go down the list, additional items, all scoring two-thirds or above, though the extremely important has started to decline in some of those circumstances. And now, let's move to the educational outreach. Again, a reminder, friendly reminder, while you can't advocate, you can educate, and we presented them with a series of statements, and after each one, we randomized it, so everyone heard different order. After each one, we said, "Having heard this, would this make you more inclined to vote yes on the measure?" If they said it would, we asked them, is that much more inclined, which is the dark blue, or somewhat more inclined, which is the light blue? And I've aggregated the total more inclined on the right-hand side. And you could see these numbers are extremely high. Um, the lead are, the lead statements, they're all on this page statistically equal. There's a homeless argument, which is somewhat tweaked a little bit from the previous one that we asked, but that had scored well, uh, before, but it's really pops now and really speaks to the efforts that the city has been making and is, and is moving forward and making in the future. You really do respond to people's views about how to address homelessness. I, I know that has been an important element for the, for the council and for the city manager, and that's clearly reflected in these results. Then there's the concern about local control. That has always been an important element in your city. Voters want the money to be spent locally. They don't want, uh, the state, the, the, the county, anyone to be taking money away from you. Um, and as you know, this is money that will, will be in local control, though voters don't know that, and so you need to remind them that. And then there's that streets argument, and while just, uh, mentioning streets scored well, but not as well as previously, this argument, putting into context, really spikes in terms of three-quarters of the voters saying they would be much more inclined or somewhat more inclined to vote yes. Then the youth argument, which is again, always scored well in your city, except now we've changed it a little bit, because you're now offering programs online as well. You're one of the, uh, major cities that are doing that, and it's clearly, people are responding very well to that in terms of, uh, their support as it relates to the measure. And then, the, always the concern in any, uh, jurisdiction about accountability. I'll remind you, people don't vote for a measure because of accountability, but they may vote against the measure if there isn't. And while you know that legally you're required to do annual financial audits and public disclosure of all spending, voters don't always know that, and so they really need to see that in writing for them to feel that you're going to stand by that. So, uh, we have several other items that score well, but I'd like to go down to the vote again. So remember, we asked the ballot question early in the survey, just ballot title and summary. That was sixty-three yes, thirty-two no, five percent undecided. You've already seen that. I'm just reminding you. And then, after education, that what the money could be used for, and then in effect, telling your story of why this measure is important to the city and how it could impact the city. Support goes up after reading the ballot question again, seven points overall, from sixty-three to seventy. And the definitely yes jumps pretty dramatically. This is what makes me happy. You know, assuming you, you know, for the side that would like this to pass, this is a good, uh, this is a good measure. I remember, I re- I'm reminded that ultimately, it will be the voters that decide, and if they choose not to, then it will not pass. But this clearly, educational outreach makes a difference. Um, the overall, again, moves up seven points, but that definitely yes moves up thirteen points. That's huge. Way beyond the statistical margin of error. And now you've got definitely and probably folks at sixty-three percent. If you put the margin of error to the test, even at that more conservative vote of sixty-three for definitely and probably, we're talking about a fifty-eight vote or a sixty-eight vote, but above that margin of error of fifty-plus-one. On the no side, the no side, the noes drop nine points, but we haven't said anything negative yet, so probably not surprising. But the definitely no is super low at four, fourteen percent. This tells me that probably, regardless of what you would be offering, there's about fourteen percent of your electorate that will never vote for any kind of revenue-enhancing measure. But that is super low compared to most communities. Now, looking at the districts again, this is how you will read this, uh, you can read this, uh, chart. The first column are the various districts. That's simple. Ordered from one to five. Oh, I ordered it by number, not by preference. Um, second column, is there total yes initial vote? That's the definitely, probably, and lean yes for the overall city and then the various districts. You've seen this before. Vote after education, telling them what the money could be used for, and then really why this is important, telling your story in a non-advocacy way. The third column is the yes vote, definitely, probably, or lean yes. And then, the difference is in the fourth, in the fourth column. So you could see, while District Five started off at fifty-two percent, they're now at sixty-three percent. They needed to understand why this was important before they were willing to commit to a yes. Evidence that education matters in this situation. And then, we hit them with a pretty expansive opposition statement. And while it's one paragraph, I thought it was important to enumerate the different elements to this statement that people will use to argue against this measure. It's not the right time to raise taxes again. There's a pandemic which has resulted in a recession. So if we need to remind them that, we have. That there, the increase, uh, in retail prices will decrease local shopping. Your local, your local stores, like everywhere else, have taken a significant hit, because they've had to close, and they're opening, hopefully, uh, appropriately. But nonetheless, it may take a hit, and we wanted to test that out to see if that was important. And then, the city should use its rainy day reserves. And then finally, if you just cut waste and inefficiency and excessive salaries and pensions, you'll be able to pay for these essential services. That's something we hear everywhere about government. It's not exclusive of you folks. And then we re-asked the ballot question. So we're simulating a campaign. Uh, the initial vote is where people are now, just hearing the votes, the ballot summary. Vote after education is your educational outreach, uh, not advocacy. It moves up seven points overall. I've already mentioned the point. The definitely yes moves up thirteen. After that pretty expansive paragraph, support drops ten points overall to sixty percent, so below the initial vote. The definitely yes drops to thirty-three, so that's pretty extensive, twelve-point drop. Your total no is only at thirty percent in spite of the fact we pretty much tried to hit everything at this measure we could in that last paragraph. And what's striking to me is that your definitely no is only at seventeen percent. What, what this tells me is that the measure could sustain a modest opposition, uh, assuming things are where they are now or getting better. I can't tell you what could happen if some other major hit happens to us that is not anticipated at this time. Remember, it's a cross-section of data at this moment. But what also is striking to me, and I don't very often see that, is that you've got eleven percent after everything is said and done that's undecided. It tells me that they need to learn more. They need to hear what's going on with government, what are the needs in the community, how government, local government, i.e. you folks, can make a difference in people's lives, both not only residents, but businesses in, in making a difference, given what we're going through with the pandemic and with the, uh, slowdown in the economy. And I wanted to show you in gra- in a line form the differences between just a few months ago in terms of level of support. So I took everyone who said definitely, probably, or lean yes, and I made them blue. That's that total yes line for the initial vote, the vote after education, and the vote after critical statements. I took everyone who said definitely, probably, or lean no. I made them the red line. Uh, you could see that, uh, after each, the initial vote, and, uh, the vote after education, vote after critical statements, and that great line, gray line, is the total undecided. Now, the left side is the January, February results. The, the June twenty are the current results. The couple of things strike me. One is that the shape of the graph, the lines are- One is that the shape of the graph, the lines are extremely similar. And that for the most part, while the gap is a little bit better in June, i.e. the gap between the yes and no is slightly better on after the vote after education and the critical statements, there's a similarity between January and February and June. So the sentiment is there, their, their interest, it continues to be there. The vote is soft. We saw that with the definitely yes and the definitely no. People are not hard in any one area. The strongest evidence of being sort of hunkered in place for at least a moment was that definitely yes after vote after education at forty-five. That's an extremely strong number. But after a paragraph, they've been knocked down again. So my conclusions, and then happy to answer any questions. Thanks for being so patient. Majority continued to perceive that the city is headed in the right direction. Similar to most well-run cities that we've seen in the state as well as the state, things haven't dramatically changed. If not, they've stayed the same or gotten better in terms of the direction number. One in two perceive that the pandemic will be under control within a year. Smaller percentages think it will be under control within six months. A plurality do not perceive that the local economy will have recovered in either six months or a year. So having that in the context, you see that people are still open to a potential measure. Almost three-quarters recognize the need for additional funds, slightly more than earlier this year. Initially, slightly more than six in ten would support a simple majority. Three-quarters sent general purpose sales tax statistically similar to the baseline survey. Keeping public areas clean and safe, protecting local drinking water sources, retaining local businesses, preparing for and recovering from public health emergencies, and maintaining nine-one-one emergency response are considered among the most important potential features of the measure. The takeaway from here is that the values that your voters had in January and February still remain strong, except they've added some elements to that list, given what has happened both health-wise and economically. Educational statements about addressing homelessness, the desire for local control of tax revenue, the need to repair local streets and ensuring Belfour youth have activities to remain safe are leading reasons to support the measure, though you have many more. And this just suggests that you have to be mindful of message discipline. I'll remind you that voters typically are confused when they hear twenty reasons why they should be voting for it. So if you're all comfortable with a small number of reasons, I would encourage you to continue to explain the need if you perceive there is one in a unison fashion. After education, support rises to seven in ten. It's a very good number to be for a fifty-plus-one measure. However, after a critical statement, support drops to roughly six in ten. Despite the decline, support still remains above the margin of error for passage. The education that you can provide, if the legally permissible education that you're able to provide can lead to a strengthening of that support, definitely yes. It's important to note that only one-third said they would definitely vote yes by the end of the survey, seven percentage points less than in the baseline survey. They need to truly understand the needs. If the, if the council is uncomfortable about doing public outreach, then the likelihood and viability of the survey, of the potential measure would be severely hurt. And now I'm happy to answer any and all questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Bernard, always, always insightful and always invaluable. Thank you. Mr. Stewart, I don't know if you have any comments before I open it up to my colleagues.
No, just one. Mr. Bernard, we talked briefly about the council's discussion of putting a, a measure on the November ballot as well for a charter in the city, a local charter adoption. We've done some brief looking into that. And I think that the general consensus between you and Ms. Liu is that's probably not a great idea at this time. Do you have any strong feelings about that you want to impart, or is that something you don't want to discuss tonight?
I can hear you, but I had trouble hearing the council member. Thank you. Sorry about that. Yes. Even more so now, I think, I, I think you, you need a clean shot at this. And I'm worried that if people are unhappy about the charter amendment, they may take it out on the sales tax.
That's a great point. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So let me, can...
Thank you.
Okay, great. Oh, perfect. Okay, got it. Okay. So what do we go up to, to questions for my colleagues? Let's start off with Mr. Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow the, got the ask on, on the charter. There's been also discussion about like other taxes or tax, like for example, the transit occupancy tax. Is that, is that something you also would not look, you know, high upon at, at this time also?
That one I heard, Jeff. That one I heard, and I anticipated that. I would strongly encourage that you, since we focused on the sales tax, I can speak to that. But if you'll remember from the previous data, it was, it will hurt the sales tax success. So I have no reason to believe that will have changed now. And if anything, it might be harder because your support is a little softer than it was in January.
All right. Okay, thank you. I think just in general, again, decisions are, you know, look at data-driven. And this is quite thorough. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. And there's, it's, it's very interesting to, to see how the response was. And then my last question is, when you, when you did the sampling, again, you just, you found five hundred from, you know, from the voting populace. Did, did you ask any age question? Like, so we get an idea from maybe what age group kind of feels what?
All right, Jeff, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to mention that one.
Mr. Hamada was asking whether or not you did the age-related stratification on the data to recover. Did you ask persons' ages when you took the data information?
Yeah, so as you may know, age is on the file. And so we don't need to ask age. We actually had everyone's age. They would have indicated that when they registered to vote. But in terms of the results, if I looked at the age, aged by the initial vote, you've got eighteen of forty-nine, sixty-six percent support it. They make up fifty-three percent of your likely November electorate. Fifty to sixty-four, sixty-nine percent support it. They make up twenty-seven percent of your electorate. And a little less than fifty percent from sixty-five plus initially support the measure. They make up twenty percent of your electorate. And I can, if you give me a moment, we'll see if that changes. That doesn't dramatically change. There's some movement up in terms of support between the age group of fifty to sixty-four. After education, they started at thirty-five, definitely yes, and they move up to fifty-one, definitely yes. So there is some movement for folks who are in that fifty to sixty-four range. That is helpful for you.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, Mr. Bernard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you so much, council member. Mayor Protim Koops?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, what I interpret, you know, this was a new experience for us to have a survey done so quickly after we had the initial one, knowing that we had an unusual situation with the pandemic. But I'm pleased to see that the results came back as well as they did. And what it tells me is that the citizens of Belfour have hope in the future and that they're not going to keep from spending a little additional money to keep what looks to me like the motivation of improving our city is still there. They're not abandoning us. They, they feel as though what has been done so far will continue to be, need to be supported by this sales tax. And did we have any discussions on this ever sunsetting, or is this till? This is for good?
We did discuss having it sunset and decided that that has negative connotations, whether you do it. Even though it does offer some solace to it, voters don't like that. So there will be no sunset on this as prescribed.
All right, so we'll keep it as.
Well, may I, may I answer, add to what was said? Actually, the voters prefer the term until ended by voters. There, there legally has to be a duration in the ballot question. But voters don't want thirty years. They don't want ten years. They want to be able to have that control if they feel there is no longer a need or the council isn't being reflective of their needs. In your case, both surveys in January and now demonstrate that you're being responsive to their priorities. And I, I suspect that's why voters are comfortable with moving forward on this. And using the frame till ended by voters scores quite highly in your city.
And my perception would be, Richard, is that we have, the number one concern was always homelessness. And the timing was right for us to be able to try to do what we did with the homeless shelter. And that has been recognized and received well. So we have been addressing their main concern and we got some recognition for that. Could that be it?
I, I think that helps.
Didn't hurt.
Couldn't hurt.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protim. Mr. Councilmember, Santa Inez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard, thank you again for your presentation. Just to close the loop on the possible ballot measure, how about the, the door tax? Do you have the same opinion on that, just like the TOT?
Jeff, can you respond, can you reply?
Mr. Sananaz, Richard asked about the door tax, the infamous renters' door tax on the...
I'll remind you on the initial survey, the door tax scored extremely poorly, more so than any of the other taxes asked. We did not re-ask that question now. I can't imagine that that would have scored higher given people struggling financially to pay their mortgages and their rents.
Okay, thank you. And the next question is, it seems like we have a good baseline. The support is there even within the margin of error. I guess my next question is, if we were to go ahead with a ballot measure on the sales tax, what would be our next steps and then what would be the timing?
Richard, he, sunny, Mr. Sananaz asked about if we, that he believes that the baseline data is still decent and what the next steps would be. And the city clerk could answer that question. It's a matter of placing it on the agenda in late July for an early August inclusion on the ballot.
Yes, that right. The deadline to submit a ballot measure to the county is August seventh. That's a legal deadline.
So we need to take a resolution before that date?
Correct.
Okay.
I may, if I may, I would also strongly encourage, if it's the will of the council, to do some public outreach, legally permissible public outreach. I know once it's placed on the ballot, you are more restricted. But anything you can do to communicate to your residents what this is about and what the money could go to, remember, it's a general purpose, so you can't promise anything. But you can talk about priorities of the council, as I know you do in most council meetings. But to get it out to the broader community, there was, the data suggests that the more they learn, the more they are inclined to vote yes on the, because they value the priorities you have, because they're, it's their priorities. But they need to know a little bit more about your story. What, you know, what are the needs? You're gonna fix the roads. You're gonna do all these things. I would encourage that as part of the package of next steps.
So the public outreach that you're talking about will be similar to what we did with Measure P?
Yes.
Okay.
But what he's encouraging is the, we have more broader range of public outreach as we go forward before we place this on the ballot. Once we're on the ballot, we're limited on to education items that we can discuss. Prior to being on the ballot, you have a much broader range of discussing with the residents and having further discussions about it, which is it is something we're gonna talk about tonight with the thought of canceling the second meeting in July, that we have an option of placing that on a July thirteenth agenda or to schedule a special meeting prior to the seventh of August to adopt this and put it on the ballot if the council chooses to go forward that direction. But that's something we discuss after the fact. But what Richard's encouraging, that you start talking about it.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, council member. You know, can we do this, some, see some green lights? Can we shut off our mics? I don't know if that maybe will improve the sound. I'm not sure. I'm just thinking we can try it out before seven. And last but not least, Councilmember Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The margin of error has always been one of my calculators regarding Measure A and Measure P in the future than when we use you, Richard, with those projects that we had over five years ago. And with Measure A, it was right at the margin error when we lost by twelve votes. And we were within the margin of error when we won on Measure P. So that, that's a big indicator for me from the education that I've had in the future. And then we called it the, what do we call it, the road trip or something? When we went out and educated all the service clubs and communities? Roadshow, yeah. Roadshow. And, and I'll be one hundred percent behind helping educate people because that, that's a big thing. And if you do things right, it just goes to show that you can pull this off. But I have a, have a question, Richard. I don't, I know you didn't pull it. The three-quarters sense brings us to what the state cap is, and that's what's left that we can take. Do you have any feeling on if we were to run a ballot measure that is one percent and collect the three-quarter until the state raises a cap? Because we're all, all gonna know that the state at one day will raise the cap on that. Do you have any feelings with that?
Well, I, I understand why you might want to do it, and I know of a city that has done it. And I know other cities are looking to do that. I guess I'm one, I am of the mind that, I don't know if, if a city would be attacked because they're asking for more than their, their fair share according to the law. And I'm putting this all in quotes. And I'm, right now, I need to figure out how to get you over the ballot, uh, over the finish line. And anything that I think can be a noisy distraction worries me that people would get caught up in those details and say, now, this isn't me talking. But one might say, well, the city is being a little bit of a pig by trying to get more sales tax than they're entitled to. I don't want it to be a distraction. Your story stands on its own. And any kind of, you know, jab from any, any person or organization that may oppose that, that can distract people off your ultimate goal is something that I'm mindful of. Perhaps you come back at another time to do that. But what is that, the bird in the hand, you know, statement? Is, it tends to be my philosophy. But ultimately, it's the... But ultimately, it's the council's wisdom, and they need to do what they believe to be the right thing.
Well said. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. And for me, I I just had a question regarding, and I know this wasn't a question that was posed. Frankly, I don't have the data, but one thing that I'm that I'd be interested in hearing from staff is, and not right now, but at some point in time, is if there's a way of breaking down, like, how much of our sales tax revenue is generated from from our domestic customers versus customers from coming out from outside of town, the with our town increasingly becoming more of a destination? If we're able to find that that we're getting a lot of customers from outside the city, if that message would resonate as part of the educational effort with in if the council decided to move forward with this? Thank you.
Richard, did you hear that?
Yeah, I did. I did. You know, we've we've tested it in a lot of jurisdictions, and I'll tell you that most recently, that message scores well in cities that are tourist destinations, like a San Luis Obispo, that kind of thing where, you know, or a Morro Bay, where three-quarters of the sales tax is paid from outside folks. And it also sometimes does well in cities which have an enormous enormous number of big box stores, or sometimes malls, but big box stores, like, you know, having you had a Costco, a Home Depot, or a Lowe's, like, just not only one, but many. That tends to score well. In other cities where they don't have those two elements, that mess that message doesn't score as well, but knowing what that number is might help. In your case, I don't know what that number is, and perhaps your finance person would know, but if it was, you know, in the 60, high 60s, low 70s, which I'm skeptical about, but I can always be proven wrong, then there might be, you know, legs in that message. But if it's 30s, 40s at best, you have some amazing stores in your community, but I I don't know if you have many, I don't recall there being many big box stores. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're, Richard, you're correct, and we I think we have some measure of breaking some of that data down through our consultant that does sales tax, and I'll certainly do what I can to pull that that information together for the council. And then if it turns out to be a number that you mentioned there, we may have to talk further about it. But right now, I I think you're right. I don't see that number being that high, but we'll we'll look into it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart and Mr. Bernard. That completes my questions. I thought it was a very thorough presentation, and we have some talking to do, but other than that, gentlemen, any last questions for Mr. Bernard before we move on? Yep, okay. Okay, great. So thank you so much for that staff report, Mr. Stewart and Mr. Bernard. And Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments or questions regarding this item?
Karen, is anybody in the audience wishing to ask a question?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize that feature.
No problem. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone at this time.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. So with that, any, again, last minute questions, comments? All right. I'm sorry? No, I think we're good.
Richard, thank you, sir. That was an excellent job, and I think for tonight, we're done with you, but we always have questions, you know.
Yeah, well, you you know where to find me. Happy to always answer them. Thank you very much. Please stay safe. Thanks again.
You do the same. Take care, Richard.
Thank you so much. Gentlemen, Mr. Stewart, so is this a receiving fire, or are we making any decisions, or?
If I was looking for any direction tonight, I'd want to hear if there is any reservations on the council's front of any questions they want to ask us. Because of the time crunch on this, we're probably looking for direction, whether or not to post this on the July 13 agenda for inclusion on the November ballot, or would you rather we spend more time talking up the community, schedule a special meeting since we canceled the special meeting in, yeah, we could do it, we could we canceled the second meeting in July. So if we don't do it on the 13th of July, we'd have to schedule a special meeting and put the item on there. It's the council's preference on this, what they'd prefer to do. Staff has no preference on, oh, she's checking.
To everyone that's joining us by Zoom, we apologize for the technical glitches that we're running into right now, but in the interest of ensuring that the audience is well aware of what we're having a conversation on, we will, we have not made any decisions at this point in time regarding the presentation that was just presented to us. And it is 5:08 by my watch, and we will recess until our 5:30 PM closed session. Thank you.
The meeting from our 4:00 PM study session. So, Mr. Stewart, did you have any comments for us?
No, the the question was asked, I think, before the communications went out was, what would be the recommended next step? And as I started to say that and finished, I'll say again, is that the next regularly scheduled council meeting is July 3. So the council has an option, either directing staff, or decide to back that's the direction they choose, or the 3rd of July, so it's going to include on the ballot by August 7, which is the deadline, or the second meeting in July, and council, this is council of the city, if the council wishes to go past July 13 and to spend more time talking to residents or whatever they feel like doing on this issue, we could call a special meeting and do a better as well. So it's really the direction of the choice in council.
And so what you're looking for us tonight is, or right now, is just an idea as to how we want to proceed, or do you?
Correct.
We're not we're not actually taking action.
You don't need to take any action. Just give us some direction.
All right, Mr. Dutton?
Yeah, I got an idea. Stop now with your talk for a bit. I think we ought to, you know, take our time as soon as possible to start the wheels in motion for this. And education is a big thing for me. The community of education helps, and if we got staff in motion to get it on the council meeting, we can all, every one of us have our inner circles. And if we decide to go that way, we can all start educating our inner circles at that time of people or whatever, on what's coming. I had a whole, Sunny myself, headed an upcoming committee regarding this, and we had several issues of, not issues, but several ideas. And this is the one that had the most revenue involved in it. And I think seeing the R3's presentation and the questions that we threw at him to come to this conclusion of this one, sales tax idea is well worth it, and I think we ought to get it in as soon as possible so we can all, as a body, go that way to start working on education.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Santi Ines?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm glad I echoed your comments of Councilmember Dutton, because you're serving that revenue subcommittee, and what I would like to add is, at the next meeting on the agenda, I'd like to invite the members of that subcommittee, so that they would know firsthand what our final recommendation is to go into that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santi Ines. Mayor Potem Kupps?
Yes, I agree with what had just been stated. And now with that, are we talking about whether or not we're gonna have a secondary meeting or just one meeting in July?
No, I think what I'm hearing is the July 13 meeting, the September meeting in July. That's I think that's great, and I'm more with that idea. The only other, one that I haven't finished business of this is, what I put in the recommendation is we call it the charter section, for one last meeting to explain what the label is, put those folks before we, but that's something to outside of the council action tonight, but I just wanted to put my agreement on.
And I'm glad you bring that up, Mr. Stewart, because I know we're talking about the regarding the revenue, but can we share also some thoughts regarding the charter subcommittee? I know that that Mr. Stewart and Mr. Bernard gave us their opinions. Do we agree with their opinions of not proceeding with the charter amendment at this point in time, or?
Yeah, I would I would concur with that only because of the, I would concur with that only because of the state of the mood of society, lack of better terms. I don't know if you want to go down that road now, and I and I was, I've always wanted to do it, and now seeing with this new world that we live in, and all the things going on, I think we ought to put it on hold.
I agree with that. I think that we need to concentrate on our potential of doing our revenue enhancement and concentrate on that and not dilute it with going with contract ideas.
Mr. Santi Ines?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I concur with that, because I think the the sales tax ballot measure is the big fish, and I think I'm trying to I'm trying to reduce the number of distractions from it, because if we can pass that ballot measure, I think it's a huge win for the city.
Councilmember Hamada? What about those points?
Yes, well, I would say, again, education's golden. I think we've seen the big picture on this. I was part of the charter city committee, and I think let's let's focus and let's be ready for the 13.
Well, let me add first, it doesn't necessarily the idea is that, I just don't see it as fully tabled in the future, because I still believe the charter as presented is worth pursuing, and I think that we should be willing to resurrect that somewhat in the future.
Yes, yeah. Yes, we heard that. I understand that.
Yeah, no problem, Councilmember. So I I echo everything that was said. I think if we focus on the revenue at this point in time, I think that's a little more, it's a little wiser. To your point, the merits on the charter amendment language is it's there for the future, in case the council in the future wants to tackle that. But I think, like Councilmember Dutton said, I think the world has changed the last three, four months, and wow, we don't know what the next year, four months will bring. I think it's we have to make a decision now, and I I concur to that. I think tabling the charter for now would be the wisest thing. So with that, Mr. Stewart, would you be able to involve those committee members?
Yes, we'll make those notifications, and we'll write all sets, there'll be a few chart sets as well, and I would see first off says our direction of that, so I think we're good to go.
Great, thank you. Any other direction you need from us, Mr. Stewart, regarding?
I think you've been very clear.
Okay, great. All right, gentlemen, so with that then, it is 5:41 by my watch, and this special study session is adjourned.